You ready? You ready this time? All right.
Somebody said you were gonna call me.
Couldn't help myself. I'm sorry.
Go for it.
All right, we're gonna call the regular meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselberry.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Protem Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here. Please rise and join Mayor Protem Edgar in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Please bow your heads with me. Dear precious holy Father, we thank you today for all of your blessings, our freedoms, and our safety. Be with us in our discussions and our decisions that we make for all those who have entrusted us in confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity. That our decisions may reflect with what is right and good. In your precious name, amen.
Amen. Before you go, key. We're honored today to have all the people who helped make the Race on the Base a success here for a small thank you for all the work that you do. So if the council would please join me.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Corey Lake and I'm the Recreation and Community Services Director for the City of Los Alamos. And I just want to echo the mayor's comments. This year was our 34th annual Race on the Base. Took place February 28th and definitely our most successful event that we've had in its history. We had 4,444 participants, so it's a very easy number to remember. So, thank you to every single one of you who came out and participated in the race. We're a vendor at the race and what we're here to honor tonight is all of our sponsors. So, to just brief, we do a big sponsorship campaign and we look for partners in our community. And that's truly what we do, is we value every single one of our sponsors. And we do value them as partners rather than just a sponsor. We look with them in every possible way to help market their business, their organization, and see how we can collectively work together from the city's standpoint, from the staff's standpoint, the elected officials, to the appointed officials, and to every single business owner and employee. So, thank you very much to all the sponsors. We had a record number this year, 28 sponsors and partners, which was awesome, that helped contribute to make the event very successful. So, thank you. So, we're gonna start with our three largest sponsors first. Our title sponsor for the fifth consecutive year, like to bring up the representatives from Southland Credit Union. Southland has been a very big partner of ours for several years, not only for the Race on the Base, but for several other events. But this is definitely the signature of not only the city, but definitely of Southland Credit Union. And we very much appreciate all that they do. If you guys want to stay up here, that'd be great, and we'll just bring the rest of the crowd up with you. Our next sponsor that we really stepped up this year and made our event even bigger and better, our Health and Fitness Expo sponsor. For the first time, I'd like to bring up the Los Alamos Medical Center. The medical center this year really went above and beyond and we rebranded our expo. We had nearly 80 vendors this year, which is another record that we set this year, and we're really excited and very much appreciate the medical center. We brought in several medical companies and doctors' offices that joined us this year that we know that the runners really appreciated that expertise and them being right in the expo. Also like to bring up Republic Services, our volunteer sponsor. Republic has really reached out the last several years and been a big contributor to the event, not only contributing several of our waste boxes and receptacles, but makes a big contribution to help all of our 550-plus volunteers that come out and give their time, both on Friday for Pack a Pickup and on Saturday for Race Day. So, big appreciation to Republic Services. Like to thank Denny's, our food sponsor. It's definitely a chore feeding 4,444 participants, as well as spectators, and volunteers, and all the vendors, so we very much appreciate Denny's of Seal Beach. The Orange County Fire Authority, a huge partner of ours this year. Huge partner of ours this year, and it came in, they always support the event, but they really stepped up this year to make an even bigger contribution, and we very much appreciate all that they did. Pacific Coachways, our transportation sponsor. Pacific Coachways brings all of our volunteers from the registration area out onto the course, which obviously is a very, very large area, so we appreciate their support. Like to bring up Los Alamos Cardiovascular. And I'll bring up Performance Vein Institute at the same time. Come on up. Los Alamos Cardiovascular and Performance Vein Institute are new sponsors this year, and they sponsored our 5K Walk. So, we very much appreciated them, and the 700-plus walkers very much appreciated their support. They had banners throughout at every mile marker encouraging people to keep going and to come visit them and get their legs checked out at their booth. Like to bring up Gonal Lumber, one of our longest sponsors. Gonal Lumber's always been a great partner of the city and the Race on the Base, and we very much appreciate their continued sponsorship. Like to bring up Cottonwood Church. Another long-term partner of ours for the past several years, and not only do they support the event through the sponsorship and a vendor booth, but they bring out several participants as well. Sorry, we're running out of space. We need a bigger area here. Like to bring up Long Beach Memorial Hospital. Long Beach Memorial has been a sponsor for the last several years, and we appreciate their partnership. All right, we're gonna have to get friendly here, folks. I got a few more here, sorry. Orange County Breeze. Partner of ours for several years. Rotary of Los Alamos in Seal Beach. Rotary Club has been a supporter of the event for several, several years, and we very much appreciate their continued support year after year. And we'd be remiss to recognize the, our partners at the Joint Forces Training Base who have allowed us for the last 10 to 12 years to have the event on the Joint Forces Training Base. So, please come up and be recognized. Thank you very much. Now, I'm gonna ask if I missed any sponsors, if we didn't see you on the way in. Please speak now, forever hold your peace. We hope we've got everybody. So, again, on behalf of the staff, I just really want to appreciate it, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor, but thank you, everyone, for all of your continued support year after year and making this the best yet.
Could we ask all the people on the end to kind of come in the middle here for a group picture? Come on. There we go. There you go. There you go. Thank you. Thank you all. At this time, it's my pleasure to turn the microphone over to Councilman Gross, who is the chairman of WestCom.
Thank you very much. You know, it doesn't make any difference what time of the day, night, week, if something happens and you're in need of help, you go to the phone and you dial 911. And you get police or you get fire that show up at your house, but there's somebody in the middle of that process. It's extremely important to the caller, as well as to the first responders, and that's our WestCom Dispatch Center, the West Cities Police Dispatch Center. And I'd like to bring up Michael Berry, the Lead Dispatcher, and Steve Ditmarz, the interim This is actually National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and so we're pleased to honor them today and all of their dispatchers. I'd also like to make notice of the 2014 Dispatcher of the Year is Valerie Oberle. I don't know if Valerie is here tonight, just you two guys. And then, 2014 Exceptional Shift Teamwork Service Award went to Lead Dispatcher Kathy Moeen, Lead Dispatcher Marie Pope, Dispatcher Josh Goldmark, Dispatcher Allison Vaughn, Dispatcher Cheryl Austin, and Dispatcher Jill Gasler. This is when, was in regards to a stolen vehicle foot pursuit that took place in the city of Los Alamos. And then there's a Meritorious Service Certificate, Peer Recognition for Outstanding Service in Equipment and Personnel Manager, Personnel Management, and that went to Lead Dispatcher Lindsay Lenhart. So, we want to thank them all very much for the countless hours they put in and the job they do in dispatching both the police calls and transferring over the fire calls to the Orange County Fire Authority.
Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Nice to see you guys came early this year.
Yes.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, all of, gee, I'm going off script for a second. You know, it's Debbie and Rob Feldman. We live and breathe Los Alamos. It's nice to be home. What we're going to talk about, we've been to other city councils, and they look at us like we're somewhere else, but when we come back to Los Al, we get smiles, people say hello to us, so it's nice to be home. Debbie and I have been involved with, we're volunteers for Jewish Family and Children's Service of Long Beach and West Orange County. The past 28 years this race has been going on, and just a quick, brief update, JFCS provides non-sectarian mental health and social services to residents of 50 different zip codes down in 22 cities, which Los Alamos is very much a big part of. Our mission is to empower people to make positive changes through affordable and professional mental health and support services, which we all know is quite needed. We assist all people without regard to race, religion, ethnicity, disability, economic status, sexual orientation. We offer individual and family counseling, direct money management, and socialization for older adults, support groups, and topics such as bereavement and career guidance and help for domestic violence victims. We're also on campus in all elementary and middle schools in Downey, and for the second year in a row, we're in Los Alamos Elementary School. So, we've really, really starting to get in the Los Al school system, which is fabulous. So, I'm gonna let Deb take over, who has been the chair of this race since I'm president, I've gotta let her take over anyway, so.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here today to tell you about Race with a View and to ask your participation. Race with a View is a 5K, 10K walk-run, and this year we're adding a 1K for the little kids. It's a walk-run up to the lighthouse and back for the little ones. And it's going to be held in Long Beach on the morning of this coming Sunday, April the 26th, starting at 8 o'clock a.m. Our starting is at Pure Point Landing behind the aquarium downtown Long Beach, and the route takes you along the beautiful downtown Long Beach waterfront. The race is not professionally timed, but it's a great way to do your training, and especially now that you've just had Race at the Base, you're in shape, so come on down. It'll be awesome. And we're thrilled that Elick Michelson from Channel 7 News will be there. He'll be our emcee, and K-Rock will be there for supporting us with music, and we've got runners. All the runners will receive a tee-shirt with our great logo on it, and we're very excited to have you all hopefully participate. I know that Troy has in the past, and so we hope all of you will join us. I'm gonna turn this back over to Rob.
You come to see Troy sweat, you guys, I'm telling you. He's pretty darn good out there.
I would just say that it's a really great event. Alex Michelson, the Channel 7 News guy, actually gets out there and talks to everybody and get an opportunity to meet a real news person, and right on the beach. It had great participation, and it was a really good time. I appreciate the invitation last year. Thank you.
Hopefully you'll come this year.
And we've gone a little bit further, since everybody's getting technically and logically advanced. You can go, we have our own website now, www.racewithaview.com. You can go on, you can, if you want to do a team, if you want to do, we've got some great stuff, team names already, of people that are already coming. We've tried to get other councils to, we said, you know, go against Los Al, go against, that's our home base, that's where we want, and they look at us like, again, you know, so. But it's a great fundraising effort. Last year, we were very, very, very fortunate, oh, I see the green light flashing. Last year, we were very, very fortunate to raise almost $80,000, and it truly goes to these people that need the help.
Helping out the program. So, again, thank you all so much for your help and support, and we look forward to seeing you this Sunday. And everybody out there, sign up, racewithaview.com.
Can we give you these, or can we give? Great.
I'd like to commend you on an excellent tag-team use of five minutes. I think you used four, not 459s.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Anyone else?
If I may, Councilman Mayor Carl David with Columbia College on the base, and I'm here tonight in my role as the Association of the U.S. Army Vice President for Veterans Programs and the Army Ball Chairman. This year, our Army Ball is on May 30th at the Queen Mary, and I wanted to solicit your support. I've left some forms for you, the staff put them up on the podium there, and we're looking, I'll give you a quick background of it. This is the Army's 240th birthday, and we do a birthday ball every year. When times were good, we were doing it at the Beverly Hilton in Los Angeles, and now we're down, and all the Defense Department folks are gone, and we're looking for support from anywhere we can find them. And we're looking for the community support and that sort of thing to buy a soldier night out. The whole event is a thank you for your service event. It's an, it used to be, like I said, a Defense Department meeting soldiers and commanders, and now it's down to where we're giving soldiers a night out to take their wives and dress up in their dress blues. So, we can sponsor, you can sponsor a soldier, you can buy a ticket, come yourself, you can buy a table. The tickets are $175 apiece. We're looking at 350 people, but 250 of those are gonna be soldiers. So, we're buying and sponsoring the soldiers for a night out. So, that's the whole point of it. And our website, www.ausa, for Association of the U.S. Army, dot org forward slash GLAC, which is the Greater Los Angeles Chapter of the AUSA. So, whatever you can do, I'm the chairman, and all of my contact information is here, so whatever support we can get from you, we greatly appreciate it. As always, thanks to the city council for all they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi. Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, members of city council. I am Katie Waddell. I am an employee of Orange County Breeze, but that is only partly why I'm here tonight. And a week from Wednesday will be a tip a cop event put on by the Cypress Police Department. It will be held at the Chili's in Cypress, which is off of Valley View at Corporate, and it's a great event and a terrific fundraiser. I believe the Special Olympics is the beneficiary of this event, and so I would invite you all to come out and help support this fantastic event, and just show up and show your support. I left some flyers with Mr. Lake and over there, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. What was the date again?
Uh, the 29th, I believe.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close oral communications. We'll go to the warrants. Any questions on the warrants? I'll move it. Second. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselberry.
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Edgar.
Aye.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye. Item eight, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item.
I'll like to pull C, please.
C?
Pull 8A.
E?
8A.
E.
I'd like to pull E and F.
Doesn't leave many for you, Shelley. Okay. We'll start with, can we have a motion for the rest?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move the balance.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, 8A. Troy, you want a question or report?
Just a, I would just ask for a request for modification on 8A, number two, the regular, I'm sorry, the special meeting that was held on March 23rd. I just want a little bit further explanation on my attendance when I showed up. I was late due to an absence of attending the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy Board, which is another duty of being on the city council. I would request that the city council would approve amending the notes with some more details as requested, and that would be my motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay. HC, Warren?
Sure, thank you. I do not need a staff report on this one. I do have some concerns with this matter, and right now, we'll not support it because of some concerns that I have. And, you know, in the past, there have been some missteps, mistakes, and just outright errors, including back in May of 2012, there was a decision by the Planning Commission to approve a local landmark designation for this property, the old firehouse at 11062 Los Al Boulevard, and that's in accordance with Municipal Code 17.22. And then, you know, in sometime a bit later, there was a discovery of a potential forgery on one of the four approved local landmarks that were approved all in the same lot with the, by the Planning Commission. And so, the Planning Commission had taken the extraordinary step of a public hearing to remove the landmark, local landmark designation. So, we have a, we have a property here that was a landmark, now it is not, and then now it's, again, up here for a different kind of designation. You know, I guess the allegation of the forgery that was committed on one of those properties, Penal Code 470, continues to be investigated by the Orange County District Attorney. And I think on this one, I think it was a, some, just a basic lack of a title search as to see who had proper ownership of these, these properties that we took on as designating as local landmarks, and that put the city at risk in terms of some, you know, subject to being sued for encumbering a property with something that made it difficult, if not impossible, to sell. So, the thing I think that really struck me in that prior case is that I've asked for, from the, through the city clerk, the Los Alamos Museum Associations, meeting agendas in minutes whereby they went forward with these four properties, had done some kind of a, I'll say, board meeting to approve them as submitting a request to the Planning Commission for local landmark designation, and there is none. So, you know, while I'm not in opposition to the firehouse being a landmark, a historic landmark, I think it is a, it is certainly a, an old building, you know, a special building here in the city. I just kind of wondered about the whole process in which this is being undertaken, and I don't agree with, you know, again, jumping ahead of this. I think the step would be, we should designate this as a local landmark under our municipal code. We would then go forward with the application to the Orange County Historic Commission and then see what, what kind of follows, because I think that's another part of the step of going to a historic landmark, either at the state level or at the federal level, and I think we just need to make sure everything is aligned. The other thing, I think, on this one is with respect to the association itself, the museum association, there had been some, I'll say, it looks like a lack of some kind of process from what I can gather. They didn't have, they didn't abide by the agreement that had been established back in 1975, July 28th, 1975, where they're supposed to have insurance for themselves, which they didn't. They're supposed to submit a yearly report, which they don't unless someone asks. They're supposed to submit a budget of how they're gonna fundraise and then pay for the programs that they conduct. Now, one of the things that really kind of shocked me from last year is that they hosted a party for the Joel Block for Assembly 2014 on election night, and it kind of struck me as being, this is really not what a public building should be used for, for a political campaign, headquarters, political party. And with that, they charged the rate of $75 for a three-to-four hour event. And that rate, to me, seemed to be far below what would be charged for a comparable facility. So, you kind of got two problems here. You have a city-owned facility, supposedly a city-owned facility, being used for political purposes at a rate lower than market, so I think we've got a potential of, there should be an in-kind donation to the Joel Block campaign, and then who really provided that in-kind donation? So, there's a lot of things, I think, that are questionable about the associations, the way they, the museum associations, the way they conduct the business here. And then, the last part, I guess, is the building itself. I think that the building is certainly historical, but the museum, I don't see anything historical about a museum that's a 501(c)(3) entity that basically is a tenant of a building that the city possibly owns. And I've asked the city manager, is how did we acquire title to that? What were the restrictions and covenants on that title? And then, do we, are we allowed to go ahead and encumber it with some kind of historic designation at the county, state, or federal level? So, with that, I can't support this at this time. I'd like to get some information from the association, the museum association, as to what meeting agenda and minutes were they decided to go forward to the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission to go do this instead of the Planning Commission? Did they perform a preliminary title search, and if not, they should, on that piece of property? And then, as far as, I think the Planning Commission should be consulted, or this should go before the Planning Commission for their decision on that as well. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I won't support this one, and I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I'll just add to a little bit of what Warren, I agree-
I'll just add to a little bit of what Warren, I agree with him and not being able to support it this time, with needing more information. Part of the city-owned property is, the building itself, I could see as a historical landmark. The museum is not. It's just the occupant within this building. So, I'd like to get a little bit more research on that. This doesn't seem like it's a time-sensitive application. It looks like it's available at any time. But I also read in the application about funding, and they will help process the purchase order. So, I don't know what kind of cost is associated with that and who's responsible for it. So, I would just like to get some more input before we make any decision, especially now as we're going through this planning process of all city-owned buildings. I'd like to incorporate this as well, so we can come out with a full assessment of all of our assets and what the future plan is for everything that the city owns building-wise. That's it.
Thank you. Margaret, would you like to explain what is happening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Margaret Kendrick. I live in Rossmore, and I am the historian. I also am a member of the Orange County Historical Commission. And as such, I like to answer some of the questions. I didn't hear all of them because the sound doesn't come all the way to the thing. But I heard something of that we didn't have insurance. We have insurance now. We were not under the impression that we needed insurance, so there was a misunderstanding. I realized that two years ago, you had some issues with some properties in town, mainly houses, which were built in the very early times of this town's history, that they were not, they were, at some point also, there was a misunderstanding. At that point, I asked the question of the local attorney if this would pertain to the museum. And they said at that point, no, the museum was an entirely different case. Now, I would like to answer any questions which you have, and I think Councilmember Kusamoto stated some. May I answer some of your questions? And would you please repeat them again?
Certainly, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So, on your insurance, did you renew it? It was, the last one was issued March of two thousand fourteen? So, did you renew that one? So, it is, it is in effect right now?
Yes, I did again.
Okay. The question, so did you do any kind of preliminary title search on the property at one-one-oh-six-two Los Alamitos Boulevard?
Well, yes, we, I have all the papers here. I don't, no, I don't think I don't. Yes, the county gave the city the property with the proviso that it be used as a community property, that means for the area, not just for the city, but for, we understood it for the total county. If the property ever, if the city ever wants to sell the property, they can do so after they first pay market price, and then they can sell it. So, if they want to get rid of the museum and they want to sell the property, they can do so after they first pay the county for the property.
Okay, so, so the, the county does have some type of a lien, if you will, then on the property?
They have some sort, well, they have a sort of a lien, I would think, on it, in a way, in as much as, before you can sell it, you need to pay them.
But then, along that line, before one would encumber it with any kind of restriction, wouldn't you have to go to the lien holder of that to get that permission? Which kind of seems almost circular because the county commission, the Historic Commission is sanctioned or whatever, chartered by the Board of Supervisors?
Correct.
Who would then have some kind of a, say, any kind of a encumbrance we might place on it? So, it becomes almost circular.
After you approve this, or not approve it, then of course it's, if you approve it, then it will go to the county, and they have to approve it because we can't just willy-nilly approve historic markers. They have to be approved by the county.
But the, the firehouse itself is the historic building?
Yes.
Right? So, I can, I can understand, I can agree with that as far as a historic building. Museum, it's a five oh one C-three or C-whatever it is.
No, whatever problems you have, it's a museum. It is the firehouse.
Yes.
It is the adobe building, which the county built several of them, so the long, one size fits all, when they were still very rural, and there are still five in existence.
And did the Museum Association as a board meet to decide on this? And is there some type of meeting minutes or was agendaized and discussed?
Yes. It is agendaized by the Historical Commission, and it needs to be.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kendrick, that wasn't my, not the Orange County Historical Commission, the Los Alamitos Museum Association.
Yes. It was approved by the Orange, by the Los Alamitos Museum Association, and you see that in the signature of the president of the association.
Thank you.
Carrie, could you explain what the deed restriction is? Do you have it in front of you?
I don't have.
Okay. I mean, by, by memory, it's, it's a deed restriction that restricts the use of the property to something for the public use.
Correct. It needs to be a use which is a community use. You could make this, whatever, a community center or anything else. At the time when it was given to the city, the city, there was a questionnaire in the community, what it should be for. And the Rossmore Women's Club, Rossmore Los Alamitos Women's Club, then suggested a museum. The Girl Scouts wanted it for a meeting room. And at that point, the City Council said a museum, a historical museum, would be the proper, the proper place for it.
I think the city attorney has the information now.
Yes, I do have deed now, and the deed restriction says that if the property is used at any time for any purpose other than a public museum or recreational purposes, for the free and beneficial use of all county residents, the entire property and improvements shall automatically revert back to the county without any further action on the part of anybody.
So, that was my understa, we really, this, we can't sell the property in effect. We could pay full market value. I actually read the deed at one point, thinking we could do something with that property, and we would have to pay full market, fair market value as of today.
As of the date that the limitation is removed, so yes.
Yes, so we'd be paying full price right now for that.
Right.
Okay.
Also, I wanted to point out that, you know, when I first reviewed this, I thought, well, it's just a plaque, no big deal. But in the, part of the plaque program requires that the applicant apply to the state for historical designation of the site as a state point of historical interest, and that could...
We never have done that in a commission. No.
Well, it's, that's what's part of the requirements of this attachment C. So, if the council's going to approve that, I would recommend that you insist that number two of this application be excised and removed, so that we don't have the restrictions that the state will impose if it's a historical site.
Dean or Troy, any?
Yeah, I got a couple things. So, you know, definitely, when you're sitting up here, you got two different perspectives, I think, and I'll just give you a little bit of a different view, maybe. For me, I separate a building that's historic, and I separate the organization or association that's placed inside of its walls to do whatever is in the best for the community. And that was a decision long before the City Council, whatever was going to happen in there. So, you know, part of my interests and focus in the city has been a lot on historical preservation. I'm on the St. Isidore Board, trying to save that building. I also am aware of the Orange County Historical Society and their commission and the group, and they actually publish a book for all the historical sites across all of Orange County. So, each city across Orange County has two to three sites that are, that looked at in almost a docent-type way, where they go through and evaluate this. When you get to that book, they just put one out last year, and I'm, actually, I have such a boring life, I read that stuff. Yeah, that, that stuff, when you get to the Los Alamos part, it, it talks about the building, but it doesn't, it's not actually registered as one of the buildings that's historic.
No, it is not yet registered as one of the buildings. As you see, the Sugar Beach site is in it.
Yeah.
And St. Isidore's is in it, because I put all of those sites in.
Right. So, I, you know, I, I guess, I don't read into this being anything more than, this is a very important building. It's materials that were made, made up of the building, the clock tower, its purpose, and so, I'm unequivocally supportive of doing this. The California Historical, you know, we're dealing with the same issue with St. Isidore, and whether, you know, if you put that designation on a building, could you do something with it in a later time? And, you know, what's a little bit different, I think, in this site than maybe at the, at St. Isidore, or even the four or five, six homes that Councilmember Kusamoto was talking about, the, the homes that we were talking about were actually private residence, and those were a totally, I could see the, the connection, but for this, it's a totally different situation. This is a public building. It's for a public purpose. We're trying to preserve this historically for Los Alamitos. So, I, like I said, I, I will agree with Councilmember Kusamoto and Councilmember Hasselbrink, is that there's nothing urgent on this item to kind of get it through. I would wish that something like this would go five oh up here. I think if you care, well, I, I care very much about history and what gets, and I'd rather it be done right and everybody feel comfortable with it. You know, when we started out and we started going through the assertions, is there a deed, is there this, all of that is, the answer is yes. You know, and if this is the first time that Carrie's went through it, our city attorney and said, hey, I'm concerned about this, that's not in the staff report. It's, it's an important point, and it's probably something that we ought to take into consideration. So, I'm supportive of this, but I'm also supportive to adjudicate this more and to make sure that we have all the information. I don't think it's some sort of, you know, there's no motives in here. I mean, this, this thing basically is the county trying to clean up all of its historical sites, and this is one, one very important one. And, and Margaret, also, I just want to thank you on behalf of the City Council. I think that what you and the museum board do to preserve the history of this community, not just Los Alamitos, but Seal Beach, Rossmore, even parts of Garden Grove and Cypress, you know, we're very appreciative of everything you're doing. And I think these are just really good questions to ask, and that we just want to make sure it's done right. So, we really appreciate you coming down.
Yeah. There is no urgency, except I wanted to do something nice for Los Alamitos, and the end of my years will come at some, some, I assume, soon point, and so, I just wanted to do that before I leave. And, but if you, you don't agree with it, it's a problem. I would like to ask the city attorney on which of the attachments, did you see the item about the state?
It's C, number two.
Number C?
Yeah, it's on the sponsoring organization agreement, and it's item number two. And it was something that I, when it was first brought up, I thought it was one of the historical documents. This was signed in January two thousand fifteen, so this is fairly recent. So, probably, if, if this is something you would want to clean up, you would probably have to take this back to your board.
I didn't have a C, oh.
The other thing I would say, that you're probably going to have a hard time with this, is this is a pretty standard form for the Historical Commission. This may be one of the preconditions that, you know, by removing that, they may not want to put the building plaque there. But whatever, you know, we should do the due diligence to make sure either way.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Dean?
No, the, I'm supportive of the concept as well, but considering what the Planning Commission did and undid, it would seem to me that we would have come up with some type of guideline or policy establishing how this occurs in the future, and it appears like we haven't done it. And, and I'm not sure whether Parks and Recreation, Cultural Arts is the group or the Planning Commission, but I think the city definitely needs to put in place some type of a procedure on it, so that we don't go through this again, especially with the innuendos that something fraudulent was done the previous time when the private residents were included. So, I'm supportive of doing it, but I also want to make sure that we have a policy in place that makes it, that we follow that policy.
Thank you. Brett, what, how long would we, would we be looking at to vet Warren's questions, first of all? What I'm, what I'm trying to ask is, could we expect to get this back next month? Are we looking a couple months?
I think, I mean, it sounds like one of the key questions would be what our city attorney had brought up in that attachment C and number two, the concern that there's more strings that could be placed on it than just a historical plaque. So, we need to, that may take a little bit of time in itself, that piece. We can go through the other questions that Councilmember Kusamoto and Councilmember Hasselbrink had and bring that back to council, try to tie it together.
But can I just add? I mean, I think that if we, regardless of whatever the interpretation is by the legal, that whether it's a problem from Carrie's perspective or not, let us make the decision whether we really feel it's a problem. A restriction, because it sounds bad, isn't necessarily a problem. I'm for preserving it in any way we can. You know, having state designation is a good thing. It, it just depends on what the, and I don't understand the limitations on the other side, and so, I just want to be educated, but I just don't want a predisposition going into it.
Yeah, we can bring it back, and we'll bring back the whole packet to the full council for consideration again.
Okay.
I guess question's wet.
You think a month or two? Margaret, thank you. Let us sort out our questions. We'll, we'll bring it back. I think the will and goal of the council is to get this done. And if I understand it right, this is the first step that as a property owner, Los Alamitos has to give you, in effect, permission to make the application. Okay?
That is the first step. Not even the wording which I put together is yet accepted. It has to go to a committee, and then, but the most important part is your signature.
Okay. Well, I thank my colleagues for their due diligence and...
And Mayor, can I add one more thing? As we go through this, can we also ask for the completed application? Since we are the, the city owner, I'd like to see, it's, you know, they, they ask for quite a bit of documentation. I'd just like to see what's submitted, since we are signing off on this, and I think it's just our responsibility to know what's being submitted as well.
Okay, so, we're going to table C for now and go to E. Dean, how would you like to proceed?
It probably would be appropriate. This is refinancing the certificates of participation for Laurel Park. The city bought it, so it, it'd probably be appropriate for a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In two thousand and six, the city purchased the Laurel Park site from the school district for four-point-seven million. Three-point-four million of the land acquisition was financed with the certificates of participation. The bonds have an optional call date in two thousand and sixteen. However, federal tax law permits the defeasance of bonds prior to the first call date, which basically means the city could refinance the bonds this year. The city currently has two-point-nine million in outstanding principal, which have an all-in true interest cost of approximately four-point-eight percent. If the city refinanced its outstanding debt, it could provide debt service savings due to historically low interest rates. Based on current market conditions, the city could realize total cash flow savings of approximately five-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, based on the current market. And if we refinance the debt over the remaining twenty-one-year amortization period, the annual cash flow savings would be approximately twenty-four-thousand-eight-hundred. As an alternative to a straightforward refinancing, the city could also extend the amortization period from twenty-one years to thirty years, which would provide for approximately nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of new money to be used on capital projects while keeping debt service at levels just below the current payments. One benefit of combining the new money component to the, with the refinancing is that cost of issuance is only incurred once. In addition, debt service payments spread the cost over the life of the capital asset, which ensures intergenerational equity, that is, the capital asset will be paid for by all citizens who will use and benefit from the capital asset, both when the borrowing occurs and throughout the life of the debt issue. Next month, we actually plan on bringing to the City Council a draft of the seven-year CIP, the Capital Improvement Program. And at that time, we can discuss in further detail whether or not there is any desire to finance a portion of long-term capital projects. any desire to finance a portion of long-term capital projects. The bond offering process is a coordinated effort among various professionals that provide legal and technical assistance, and key members of the financing team consists of a financial advisor, bond counsel, underwriter, private placement agent, underwriters' counsel, and disclosure counsel. In most cases, the first professional retained in the debt issuance process is the financial advisor. By choosing the advisor first, the issuer has the benefit of the financial advisor's experience and expertise in the selection of other required professionals. Staff has solicited proposals through a competitive process in order to evaluate the experience and qualifications of potential financial advisors, and to determine fair and reasonable pricing. The scope of services is set forth in Exhibit A, which was attached to the staff report. Staff is recommending that the city council award a contract to Fieldman, Rollup, and Associates, based on the firm's extensive experience in municipal debt financing. It should also be noted that their fees were the lowest. And in addition, Fieldman, Rollup also served as the financial advisor on the city's 2006 debt issuance, and therefore the firm has a proven track record with the city. Tom Johnson and Josh Lance will be the co-project managers. Tom Johnson is actually here today, and here to answer any questions if the council has any. Tom has 27 years of financial advisor experience, serving California cities, counties, and special districts, and Josh Lance has 17 years of experience in public finance. And in fact, since 2010, Fieldman, Rollup has served as the financial advisor on 88 transactions for over 2.8 billion in municipal bond transactions in Orange County. So, all cost of issuance would be paid from the proceeds from the refunding of the 2006 certificates of participation. No costs would be borne by the general fund, and compensation to the financial advisor and other members of the financing team is contingent upon successful closing of the refinancing, which means if, for whatever reason, the city council or staff chooses to not go through with the refinancing, the FA, the financial advisor, and the rest of the financing team doesn't get paid. This is actually standard practice for this type of thing. At this time, we recommend the award of the contract, like I said, to Fieldman, Rollup, and Fieldman, Rollup will continue to monitor the market and develop a financing plan. And I'm here to answer any questions, and like I said, Tom Johnson is here as well.
All right. Thank you very much. We were handed a copy of this tonight. Is that different than what was provided in the packet?
I don't think I handed anything new.
It's the same?
No, I got 8E, too.
Okay. 8E was sent during the week, correct, Wendy?
On Friday.
Part of the packet that I got. There's no change?
It was sent after the packet.
So, 8E, the attachment, was the incorrect attachment in the printed packet, and then we emailed a corrected version, I believe, Thursday of last week, and that's what's printed on here.
Yes, my question is, when I picked up my packet over the weekend, 8E was in it. That's an incorrect report?
An incorrect attachment. The report's correct.
The agreement for 8, I believe F, was attached to 8E initially, and corrected on Friday. And similarly, Exhibits A and B for 8F were admitted and attached today.
So, one of my concerns here on page two of four with the staff report, which I assume is the same, says an alternative might be to, to go back to a 30-year mortgage, for lack of a better word, which could generate $950,000 in new money to the city to be used on capital projects. I'm, I'm a little concerned in what actually you're asking us. I understand you want us to approve the firm to do this, but are we, are you coming back to us with the alternatives at a later time?
Yes, that's correct. At this point, we're selecting a financial advisor to monitor the market, to assemble a team, and as part of that, they will develop a financing plan, and we'll come back to council with that financing plan. And like I said, next month, we'll also be bringing forward the seven-year CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, and we can discuss whether or not there's a desire to extend out the term to 30 years.
Okay. With that being said, then, I'll go ahead and move the action.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay. Dean, you also have F?
This is a recommendation for a consultant for user fees, and I think we previously approved the scope on that. So, I, the, the reason I pulled this was, under the discussion item, there's a reference that the, the city received four proposals on March 20th, which were evaluated based on firm qualifications and experience, proposed staffing, experience, project, et cetera. The staff interviewed the two top-ranked firms, and based on the results of those interviews, selected MBS. There's also a fee involved of $33,525 of unappropriated money that I assume comes out of reserves.
It would, in the current year.
Okay. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that we're doing that as opposed to trying to find a source for the funds, number one. Number two, this is the second time now in recent meetings where we've had staff interviewing and indicating that the top-ranked firms, I heard tonight, the combined interest of the other, which just, I, I, it doesn't sit well with me, because of what we did with the consultant for the LATV, and combined, between all of the participants, the combined years of service were just outstanding. To me, that doesn't make any difference. I think you explained very clearly the service on the prior one. I'd like to know who the four are that were responded, and I think those should be included in staff reports in the future, if my colleagues concur. It used to be that way. We also used to identify what cities the responders were located in, so we knew whether or not we were doing business with a local firm. You indicated that two of the four were top-ranked, and you conducted interviews with them. I, I don't even know who the second one was, and you came up with MBS. I, I just think the council deserves a little bit more information when these kinds of things occur, especially if they're professional services agreements, because it's helpful to know who is actually competing, and whether or not, obviously, staff has made a decision who the top two are. But it would help us, I think, a little bit better, just to know. I don't know whether this can be provided as a discussion thing in our weekly report. I don't have any problem with selecting the, the consultant at this point, because it's still going to come back to us. I would like to see staff try to figure out, and again, this is another one that we got a, a copy of tonight, so I don't know what changes have occurred between what was in the packet and what we're getting today. But I, I, I think we can get better staff reports that come in that really identify what's going on, so that we know what's going on, rather than it always being kept so tight to the vest. That's the reason I pulled it.
Thank you. Yeah, we, you know, we used to get the little table that showed all the bids.
Yeah, we can include that, and we can include it either weekly, or we will include that in the future with these types of reports.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? Motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. People go on to Mayor and Council initiated business. 9A. Warren's willing to go out to Palm Springs for two days? Are you still?
Yes.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm quickly looking to see what the agenda topics are. I did not do the prior research, so I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
I want to get guidance from the councils how to vote on items.
Do you remember?
It was in our report, I think.
Is it in there?
It had the days.
Let us finish this business, and we can come back.
I appreciate, okay.
Because it, give you a chance to read it. It, so the, the recommendation right now is appoint Council Member Kusamoto to attend and serve as the city's voting delegate, and adopt an alternate.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, because that's approved, and-
So, I guess, I think, I think the council allowed me to go and represent the city over there, and as far as guidance on the action items, is there anything in particular? If I recall, last year, there was an issue with a thermal power generating system over at Salt and Sea, which I was instructed to vote non-supportive, which I did. This year, I didn't remember seeing anything as, I guess, as noteworthy, but is there anything the council wishes me to vote on the upcoming session? Changes to the bylaws, Wildoff Corridor and Ventura?
I don't remember seeing anything controversial to anybody.
I didn't see anything either.
So, typically, what I will do for the city then is, anything that's really going to start, I guess, taking away local control, certainly I will oppose those. And then, if it is of a nature of cost that comes back to us, that is not, I'll say, in our best interest, I'll not favor, support those. But like the Wildlife Corridor and Ventura, I, I believe that's cost neutral to us, so I can't see opposing that. So, I'll, I'll make a report at the next council meeting as well.
Thank you for taking this on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Council announcements. Anyone ready to go?
I'll go. So, back in, end of April, after our last council meeting, over at the Orange County Fire Authority, Chief Jeff Bowman put on a, he called it demonstration days, and he'd ran a couple of simulations, twice, actually. There was a heart attack victim in a kitchen, and then the other one was a structure fire in the training grounds. And the point of what he was making is that the way that the, the Fire Authority is staffing the trucks, the apparatus, and the way it could be staffed with three versus four, and he showed the efficiency and the time response, and it was very revealing. So, I think it's one of those education things for, for us as the voting board members, and really public safety and how we can best utilize the resources we have. And, and to me, it's the, the time, the minutes. I think the one simulation with the heart attack was eight minutes response time versus 11. And intuitively, you think, you know, the, adding more trucks and paramedic units would, would make things go faster, and it really went the other way. It took a lot longer, not a lot, it took three minutes longer. And the four-person truck with the ambulance responded and had the simulated victim on the gurney and whisked away towards the hospital within eight minutes. So, that was very revealing. And I believe Council Member Hasselbrink will be attending the, attending the next demo days. And I, I think the chief is doing just a terrific job for the agency, and he is really trying to educate the, the board. He is working closely with the labor groups, and I, you know, just can't say enough about that. With that, I think the other, you know, I'll just turn it back over to you, and I think-
Thank you.
Okay. Couple of community events. I was able to attend Ed Royce's Women's Conference a couple of weeks ago, which was great. Condoleezza Rice was the keynote speaker, so that was definitely a highlight. She's got an amazing story. Went to the Weekcare event on Saturday night, and also participated in the Every 15 Minutes program that the youth center and the high school and CHP and Los LPD all put on last Thursday and Friday. Was able to work with the parents on Thursday night. They get together after their children are taken, and they write goodbye letters to them. So, it was quite an emotional night for everybody. It got some great conversations going, and it's, it's a great community event that happens every other year. Attended an open house for our district supervisor, Michelle Steele. She had a combined open house with Andrew Doe, who's another supervisor, and went to the League of California Cities Community Services Policy Committee, where we talked about various assembly and senate bills coming up within the state that could have some effect on us. It was mainly on e-cigarettes and how to define them, and how to monitor them and regulate them. We did have, there's a park and recs bond that's coming up on the floor that will give approximately $2 to $3 billion for park and rec projects throughout the state. They had asked all of us as cities to bring back a wish list with some kind of guesses of how much money we would need, and in less than a week, staff was able to put that together, very detailed, and get that back to the league. So, it's, it's on the list. If this bill happens to pass, we're, we're on that list, which is great. The AB 1459, the Toll Roads Initiative, tends, continues to move forward in a committee up in, up at the Assembly Floor. That's been amended for, it would require a two-thirds majority vote of Orange County Transit Authority to be able to put in toll lanes, not just leave it at the will of Caltrans. So, it, it brings back local control, as, as we all seem to be pushing for in a lot of our assembly and senate bills. And also, the ACCOC has now set up our customized legislative tracking. That's one of the services that we get by being members. I sent them seven bills that their, the outcome could have an effect on Los Alamos financially or regulatory-wise. So, I believe staff is sending out that link so we can all track these bills live, where they are on the committee level, whether they get to the Senate or Assembly Floor, and how they're voted on, so we can take appropriate action as needed. So, it's, it's a nice service that hopefully we'll continue to take advantage of. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Dean?
The items that I have will be posted on my website, losal.net, and I attended some of the same community events that Council Member Hasselbrink and the mayor attended, so I'll just leave it with that. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, a couple of things. The Weekcare event on Saturday, really good. Had a good time. I just want to thank Shelley for encouraging my wife to spend more money, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Went to a celebration. Police Officer Association put on a, the kind of a hosting of one of our police officers with over 30 years of service, and so I wanted to thank John Osborne and the community, and a bunch of the folks that put that together on Saturday for Lauren Proholsky, who was with our force for over 30 years. The race on the base, you know, we, we got everybody to come in here. We recognized them, but we thought, we forgot to recognize the most important part, which was the bragging rights of who got the most participation and who had the best time of everybody that run in that race. Because I, we never, yeah, everybody was challenging everybody, the planning commission and all that. So, can, can we add some details to how that race really went?
We didn't win, so it doesn't matter.
Sure. We, actually, I do apologize. I should have brought the plaque tonight. So, good news is, is we had, to my knowledge, a record setting, again, year for commissioners and council members. We had 18 who participated. So, thank you all for, for those of you. Unfortunately for the city council, the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Commission won it this year. They had six out of the seven commissioners that participated, which, which took them over the both percentage and the number from the council. There are four out of the five council members did attend and participated. So, but hopefully we'll, we'll continue it again next year, and next year, you guys can regain that, that certificate.
Yeah, that we, and really dis-
It is posted next door and-
Okay. Thank you. And then, two other pieces of legislation that I've been very focused on. The Senate Bill 355, which is the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy Board. I just wanted to thank the city council, our city staff, and the reaction that we had. You know, we got the park over here, Coyote Creek Park, because of our participation with the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. It's a state of California board that basically is one of the few urban conservancies in the state of California, and it's basically from Mount Baldi through the San Gabriel River all the way to Seal Beach. So, when you go down to Los Cerritos Wetlands and Seal Beach, Long Beach, you see all the restoration. That conservancy had a big hand in that. The lagoon in, in Long Beach, if you work your way up this way, Eldorado Park, and then within Los Alamos specifically, they, right along the bike trail, we put in Coyote Creek Park, adding more green space, and that's all great. At the end of one of our meetings last month, we found out that there was a Senate bill that basically allows Orange County two seats on this board, but it's mainly LA County seats, and it removes one of the Orange County seats. So, what, you know, they, not only did our city council get involved, but we also got involved with the Orange County Council of Governments, which we, we are on that, that board, and we sit, in being able to do the representation, we got our county supervisors, our state assemblies, state senate, everybody involved with that. The, for everybody at home, if you can look up on Google online, SB 355, Senate Bill 355, we are trying to kill that thing off before it gets out of committee. And, and again, the reason why is that Orange County pays into that conservancy. We want to continue to have a voice on that- We want to continue to have a voice on that board, and by taking one of the voices off of that board, it's, for Orange County, it's basically an LA County board. The reason why this is important, everybody remembers last election, we passed a $7 billion water bond. That water bond funded the conservancy another $130 million. So, what this was, was an LA County power plating, remove Orange County out of the way and allow LA County to spend $130 million and not have to worry about the votes of Orange County. So, that's something, again, that we're very focused on. The other piece of legislation that I just want to update the community on, and I would ask for Councilmember Kusamoto's perspective on this, is that the Orange County Fire Authority, very important bill that's going through right now, Senate Bill 946, Daley, who is a state assemblyman in Anaheim, this bill, and it may be killed off now, but I've been following it, it basically reapportioned the Fire Authority, of which Councilmember Kusamoto's on that Board of Directors, and it basically removes the Los Almeitos seat, and it puts it into a regional board, like the Orange County Transportation Authority, where we won't have the population or the vote to be able to get onto that board because we're not big enough. So, Councilmember Kusamoto, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm very interested in your take on this and whether the board has taken any position on this item.
So, I think you, Mayor Protem, so the Orange County Fire Authority Board as a body has delayed this one month in order to give the municipalities a chance to weigh in, but I think generally speaking, I believe the board members all oppose it. I don't know that anyone really is in favor of it, and that's, again, to take a 26-member body and then, at the state level, to impose upon this organization how it's going to be represented. So, there may be something similar to a population-weighted, as well as a one-city-one-vote waiting to have some participation. So, what happens, I think, is like the South County cities, which tend to be bigger and continue to grow, they're worried about the representation being diluted from that standpoint. And from some of the more established cities like us that aren't really going to grow in terms of population, we're going to have to, I'll say, arm wrestle with our neighbors to represent our city and then the region. So, again, I think generally, the board that's there right now opposes it, and I believe next month or this coming week, we'll be dealing with that as an agenda item at the Fire Authority Board. So, thank you for bringing that up.
So, to all of the high school students that are in the audience, this is an example of when you're on the city council, trying to fight for local control, to be in charge of the money you pay for taxes, so the fire engines, everything that's public safety, we have a vote because of one-city-one vote. We get to be on that board, that body of 26, and basically, in one move, the city could get removed in a vote through legislation to basically remove us off, and then we basically become a small city watching the action from above. And, you know, if you're sitting back trying to get funding for a new fire station, you're trying to get new equipment, and this is just an example how it takes a partnership across everybody on this council to do their part, and Warren's done a great job on the Fire Authority, but this is something, again, that we've always, as a small city, we've got to be careful and make sure that we don't get taken advantage of. To move to something a little bit more fun, so Pizza Monday, every year, Casa U Shelter has an event, and it's basically the five Mondays of March, and it's put on by Kenny Brandyberry, the guy that dresses like Elvis. Everybody knows him in the community, biggest philanthropist out there. He is on the Casa U Shelter Board, and he basically does this event by himself. A little bit of history for the city, he also puts on a golf tournament in his backyard in Rossmore, a little miniature golf. There's a lot of beverages served there, so I'm not sure anybody's keeping track of the scores, but he's raised about $500,000 doing that for Casa and for the different charities. But this one, I just wanted to report because everybody on the city council went and supported Kenny. We seen him Saturday at one of the events that I think we were all pretty much at, and so he raised another $13,000 last month for Casa U Shelter for what he calls his kids of Casa. So, Kenny, we just want to tell you, thank you. We really appreciate everything that you do, and again, this guy just never stops giving, so we're very grateful to have him. Lastly, I just want to tell Councilmember Gross, his wife Wendy was in the hospital. We just, our thoughts and prayers, we've been handing out a card out here. She's a very esteemed member of our planning commission, and we just wanted to tell you, we hope that you feel better and that our thoughts and prayers are with you. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm sure she's watching at home.
Yeah, she's going, "Come on, Dean, you should have said that." But I'm here for you.
You're making friends all over the place today. I am the member who missed the race on the base. I was sick all week. I want to thank my colleague, though, who had arranged an ambulance to follow me around the track, like at the racetrack, but I was kind of bothered he made a large bet against me finishing, so that...
I won that.
I didn't start, but the, I was able to attend the open house with Michelle Steele, and I want to congratulate my colleague Shelley on continuing the 405 battle, and thank young Kim for her help as an assembly woman, and it's a long, tough battle when you're fighting bureaucracy for your own money. But I also want to thank John Osborne for the retirement party and the Weekcare people. It was a great event. Congratulate the school board on the race on, I'm sorry, on the Every 15 Minutes, and one last thank you to the Race on the Base sponsors. You know, it wouldn't happen without you, and then, this year was particularly crazy because a week before the event, we didn't know if we had a place to hold the race, so Cory, Brett, it was an excellent job to get that done, and the fire department's still here. We can thank them one more time for bailing us out because within, a week to go before the race, the base let us know that they can't legally provide fire help, so we had to go out and find our own, and our own was there to help us, so thank you again. We are gonna, well Brett, you have anything?
Just about 10 things.
Okay. Take your two most important ones.
As quickly as possible. Just tap into some of the things. I will be attending the SCAG conference, May 7th and 8th, with Councilmember Kusamoto, so we'll try to share the different sessions that are there. Every 15 minutes, thanks to the youth center and the school district and the police department did fantastic job putting all that together. It was a very successful event. To tap into what Mayor Protem Edgar said, on the SB 355, it really was an effort on behalf of Orange County cities to come together. The Orange County Council of Governments, at their board meeting, adopted an urgency item to hear that item and take opposition and send a letter out opposing it that day, and they voted on it unanimously. And at that same meeting, ACCOC was there, and Lake California Cities, Orange County Division was there, and they submitted letters of opposition. So, it was really all the Orange County cities coming together, and almost all of the other Orange County cities sent letters of opposition individually as well, including Los Almeitos. SB 946, in terms of the board representation possibly changing at the Orange County Fire Authority, there are at least 16 other Orange, 15 to 16 Orange County cities at this point have sent in individual letters of opposition, including the city of Los Almeitos. So, the Western Orange County city managers got together to discuss this. Everyone was in agreement to send in letters of opposition, and others joined that, so very good Orange County effort once again. And Councilmember Hasselbrink, thanks to her for working with ACCOC in initiating a legislative tracking that we now have at the staff level, so we have all of our key bills on a watch list that we're tracking and can provide a really good platform back to the council to let you know where the key bills are that are impacting the city of Los Almeitos. That's it. One more thing about the Thursday, could you mention about Thursday's general plan celebration? Oh, that's a good, yes, thank you. This Thursday, we're having an event to celebrate the city's adoption of the general plan. So, we have invited community members to come out, and it's this Thursday here in the council chambers at 4:00 PM, and we just want to enjoy this moment, monumental moment in the history of the city, and that will be this Thursday afternoon.
Okay, apparently, it's too early, nobody wants to leave, so Troy, then Dean?
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick. City manager, I would ask, there's a board meeting for the Los Almeitos Unified School District. It's tomorrow, Tuesday, and I would like to make sure that we send city staff to at least get some sort of an observation of that. There's a situation going on right now in Rossmore, and there's activity where they are having a very similar situation to what we had in the field stadium and lighting issue, where the school board's going to be moving ahead with, or taking a look at potentially moving ahead with some projects in the elementary schools in Rossmore. There's other things that we've been kind of following in the same vein, and I'm starting to get contacted by folks in Rossmore that are very concerned with some of the actions that are happening with the school board, and I would just like, if you wouldn't mind, to attend in the weekly, just to provide us some sort of a status report of what went on there.
Sure.
I would also say, just to kind of make the point, I cannot vote on the item that had to do with the field stadium lighting issue. This pertains to the Greenbrook community, College Park North, where Warren lives, and the Country Squares area, but, you know, we've been saying that those lights and the sound from the PA was going to make a difference in home values. We've talked about one home that fell out of escrow for $80,000 difference in lowering the price. We've had a home fall out now three times out of escrow in our community as people are trying to sell because of what's going on over there, so it is having a real effect on our community, and we're starting to hear a lot of people fielding calls and people coming to my door regularly that are telling me that, you know, they really are having some concerns with this. And I just want to remind the city staff and my colleagues, which I cannot vote on this issue because I live too close, that this is a real issue, and we need to kind of keep an eye on it because it's not going away, and I'm still unclear whether, you know, what the final prognosis will be on that issue, and I'm sure you guys will work through that, so thank you.
Dean?
I'd just like to mention one other quick thing. The governor has appointed a military council, and I was invited to participate in a conference call this past week regarding that. The Adjutant General, David Baldwin, is a member of that committee, as well as some key stakeholders throughout the state in respect to military facilities, and I feel honored to be able to have an input on that, particularly since we're looking at potentially relocating some of the city facilities over to the Joint Forces Training Base, and I'll keep you guys advised as we go along in that particular process, but at this particular stage, things look very positive in moving forward, not only from the conference that we attended, but now with this follow-up with the State Military Council as well, so...
Thank you. Okay, we're going to join into closed session. Carrie?
Yes, the purpose of the closed session, first of all, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to Section 54956.9 subdivision D4, pending litigation, one potential case. Secondly, pursuant to subdivision D2 of the same section, significant exposure to litigation, one potential case. And thirdly, conference with labor negotiator Brett Plumlee, city manager, regarding unrepresented employees, executive management, middle management, and non-management employees pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6.
Thank you. We'll adjourn until the closed session.